Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. It is 7:03 PM on June 10th, 2019. Denise, would you please do the roll of the order?
Chris Voith.
Here.
David Proctor.
Here.
Vincent Tappola.
Here.
Anna Rosserette.
Here.
Tina Demento.
Here.
Deistatio.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, um, tonight's public hearing regarding the map discussion and recommendations that the Planning Board will make to the Town Council, if we come to that recommendation. I would just like to set a couple of proposed ground rules. That tonight's, the scope of tonight's meeting should be to the maps only. We want to discuss maps, not the underlying zoning. We don't want to discuss any current projects before other boards. So we would like to just leave tonight's discussion simply to the maps. The agenda for tonight is pretty clear. That we're gonna have a map discussion and potential recommendation.
No.
We've had several meetings, dozens of meetings regarding the underlying zoning and particular projects. So we're trying to move forward and we would like to just get public comment and board comment regarding the maps and the maps only. We'd like to limit the scope to the maps for tonight.
Does everybody have a map?
No.
The maps are on, the 2006 map is the current map that's online. I don't know if everybody has maps, I can't speak to that, Tony. And again, um... Just as a matter of my own personal comment, what Tony just did, asking a question aloud, technically that might be against rules as to Robert's rules, whether or not I should address the question that's out of order. I was asked when I first take over to please let the public have a little bit of leeway and be allowed to speak. And I've done that. I've tried not to be an authoritarian since I became the Chair. I've had some flack from some people saying I don't run the meeting properly. I've heard some flack from some people telling me I let people talk too much. It's very difficult to be the Chair when people want to comment. So I want people to speak and I want them to speak freely, but I also want the meeting to run with some sort of order and fashion. So for tonight, let's look solely at the maps. We're gonna try and talk about just the maps. I would like the scope to be limited to just that issue. All right. The maps that we are currently using are the 2006 maps. They are online. It will be the charge of this board to make recommendations regarding those maps. Does anybody on the board wish to comment? Didn't there anyone say regarding the maps, the 2006 map, what they think the map should be going forward? Debbie, you want to say public comment first?
I think that the majority of the meeting should be us talking to each other.
All right. The board has asked that we take public, we hold it without order. We take public comment first. We've got the Planning Board's recommendation as to the maps. Please stay on that point. Tonight we have Michael Wang from Form in Place. We have Robin Stein from Copeland and Page. She's one of the Towns Attorneys on Land Use Matters. We have David Rodriguez who is the Assistant Town Manager. They are gonna be here if we have questions to refer questions to them. All right. Would anybody like to comment on the maps? Mr. Riley?
I have a question.
Sure.
Is there a map that you're going to be looking at, who can react to? Is there a map that shows any kind of recommendation that we can take a look at and say, we think it's right in this instance, we think it's wrong over here? The 2006 map is a color-coded map that doesn't really identify parcels, it doesn't have that kind of specificity. There are some other maps, many of which are given to the Planning Board on other occasions, that show more specifics about the map. But without having any idea what the Planning Board's considering going forward with, I don't know how to, I'm not sure how to stop commenting.
That's gonna be one of the difficult aspects of our recommendation. Because we do not have formal maps at the moment. We have the 2006 maps that are online and then we have some draft discussion maps that were presented by Form in Place in 2000, excuse me, in May. We do not have a formal recommendation yet from Town Council as to what maps we are using. So tonight's discussion is to try and figure that out. Where are we going forward from here?
I had the clerk distribute to you a letter that was written by our attorney for the neighbors on Cottage Park Road, Bartlett Road and Somerset Avenue. If we can avoid getting into the subject of what the attorneys get and maybe hold it till later in the meeting, if it's necessary to address it. Right now, what I'd like to just talk about is the zoning maps, particularly as it pertains to the Center Business District. There's been an awful lot of discussion that the homes, the homes on Cottage Park Road are somehow included in the business district. Now, this defies two determinations, one by the acting Town Manager, one by the Building Inspector, that those homes are not in the business district. The lots in question go back to 1920s. They were recorded as deeds in 1920. That was even before there was any zoning. There were some, some of them were later subdivided. The house for myself and the Ferentys next door was subdivided into two lots in 1950 and two houses were created there. I've gone over every vote that I can find on zoning that deals with the business district. There isn't one motion that's been before the town meeting or the Town Council that deals with any lots, any lots on Cottage Park Road as being in the business district. On the contrary, in 1929, what's now the pocket lot behind the banks was zoned for business, but it only referenced that particular parcel. It didn't include anything on Cottage Park Road. You know, this whole thing goes back to a mistake that was made in the master plan that's created all kinds of controversy. It wasn't right then, it's not right now. It's also got a copy of the map that was voted on by the town meeting in 1987.
May I just ask you one question?
Yes.
So are you saying, or are you making a recommendation that when this board makes its recommendation to Town Council, it should take into consideration the history of the parcels that are in question?
The parcels in question define the boundary. The zoning was specific. The zoning zoned certain properties as business, left the others as residential. There's been no vote on all the houses on Bartlett Road going up inside the Bakers's house and the house of 58 Somerset Avenue. None of those homes have ever been, there has never been a vote of a town meeting or the Town Council at any time to make those properties a business zone. They have and always have been residential. They, they said at the last meeting, here's the 87 map. This is what the, when the Center Business District was first created, this is what the town meeting voted on. You take a look at, you've got a copy of this in front of you. There's a triangular piece of property at Somerset Avenue, between Somerset Avenue and Cottage Park Road. On the other side of the street is the lot at 1026 Somerset Avenue. It goes down and around. The white section there is the house of the homes on that side of the street. The only way they match up is for those corners, is for those two pieces of property to be in the business zone. If any of the houses were in the business zone, that line wouldn't be as direct across as it is. It doesn't, it would not, the parcels don't line up that way, but the line would be jagged, it wouldn't be a straight line across.
I, I, yeah, I'm sorry.
So, the map that comes out of this ought to be a map of what exists in the current business district, taking into consideration the guidance that you've gotten from the Town Manager and the Building Inspector. Some people have talked about some expansion, something new, something better should be done. If anybody wants to change the zoning in any of the parcels that aren't in the business district right now, you have to go through the process of rezoning those parcels. That means a vote, a recommendation by this board to the Town Council, a two-thirds vote, or if we get enough signatures, a 75% vote of the Town Council to do that on each specific parcel. It doesn't get done by redrawing the map. The map is a depiction of the zoning, it's not the zoning. The zoning's in place, the zoning has been in place, it always has been in place. These homes have been in a residential district before there was zoning in the town, and they should remain there. And if I, if, depending upon the direction of the meeting, I could get into the letter from the council. I don't think it's necessary right now and I'd like, but I'd like to reserve the right to go back to it if necessary.
Sure. Mr. Dimes, second.
Thank you, Mr. Dimes. You mentioned at the beginning of the meeting that there's gonna be a public comment. And then you wanted just to discuss the maps. Will there be a public comment?
There is a public comment, but we're addressing the meeting.
Thank you.
The agenda, I'm asking, I'm asking that everybody please limit the scope to the agenda, which is the maps, a discussion, and potential recommendation. I'm trying to limit it to that. Mr. Dimes.
Who? As I look at this map, David, 2006, who did it? Who did it?
The name of the gentleman who did it was mentioned by Tangi in the main meeting. I can tell you right now, you can my notes.
And what does it represent?
The 2006 map was done by... What was his name?
Mecenico.
No. Tangi has mentioned it. Glenn, or Glenn Gobber?
Glenn Gobber.
Glenn Gobber did that, Mr. Dimes. Glenn Gobber in 2006. At least I was according to Tangi, see she mentioned that.
What was the cripple telling us? Is this something they put in place that they think that the town should have? Or is this what is existing?
I can't, I, I don't know.
That's what we're talking about.
Correct.
Now, I was on the board so I could go back to the 60s, okay? And I did research that took it back to the 20s. And when these, every one of these outlines that were drawn at one time were strong in their input. They were done by Whitman and Howard. They were lasting type of thing. Now, over the years, there's been very little change, but for some unknown reason, like in 2001, 2014, there is now seen to be all kinds of changes being made. But the majority of the maps that you should have show, like Thomas said, basically what each one represented. This represents zero to me, because there's nothing but a sheet of paper done in 2006 by somebody.
Well...
So if you, if you look at this tonight, you should rip it up and throw it away.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dimes. Denise, Mr. Riley?
Yes, Precinct 5, Jonas Gray Riley. Just one comment, and I don't want to mix words here, but I do recall one clear comment from Chairman Baird from the Appeals Board. And it was relative to zoning. And, and, and the comment was, as we know from the situation back in 2014, if rezoning is to happen, outreach, notification of residents or other small businesses, whatever, notification has to happen to those of Butters. And that was a big piece missing. So if we're rezoning, it's almost like we gotta start with the piece that was missing and that is involving the comments from the Butters and the neighbors and local businesses in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ead.
Johnny, Precinct 1. This discussion in the previous meeting and tonight is about maps. And we have a map that was prepared by Form in Place. They based it upon the 2006, or 2007 zoning map and the GIF file of the state of Massachusetts showing parcels. What happened was it was, Form in Place used the same process as the Metropolitan Area Planning Council did. They took the 2006 map, blew it up, and tried to match it to the GIS map from the state. When they blew it up, they, on the map itself, there's a distance that I measured, measures seven sixteenths of an inch. On this map that they did, the fuzzy one, it's an inch and a quarter, which means you essentially, by whatever process, blew that map up almost three times. Which is how, and the printing is not good quality on the 2007 map, which is how you get the fuzzy boundaries. There's an, and from this, they interpreted and drew lines, that's my understanding. And that's how we came to this particular map. I should point out, it's been done by other people, but I'd like to restate it. 2007 map doesn't meet the basic requirements of a zoning map. Beginning with just simple things like not showing declination, or the arrow for declination of north. It doesn't have a scale on it. And most importantly, it was not approved and adopted as required to be incorporated into the ordinances that guide the interpretation as well as the body of zoning documents. You need both the written ordinance and you need a map. And they go together and they work together when you use them. I would say that, for whatever reason, and I remember asking Mr. Wang last time about, this is a, I copied it out of the master plan, the dashed lines around the business district. And I don't, he couldn't recall, and I didn't have a map to show him, what they incorporated. I originally thought they were limiting the scope of work for Form in Place, but they turned out ultimately to be the new zoning perimeter around the Center Business District. Now, this process, and I've talked to some friends of mine that are very knowledgeable, including a zoning lawyer who's worked all over the state. He considers this somewhat unusual for the use of doing a master plan, laying out a potential plan that maybe was appropriate. But for a serious zoning discussion, I think you have to go back to the common practice. And they generally accept it good standards, which means you start with the ordinances and we have, and the adopted maps. You look at the materials of the town, both the written and the maps. And one of the places you go is Title 17, Chapter 1708.010. In your building code, it references the official adopted map as amended for this town. And that's the 1983 zoning map, of which I made every effort to get a copy of. And I do have a reduced copy, which has some of the same flaws as the 2006 map, it's hard to read it. You look at that, however, and the amendment is the one that Mr. Riley talked about in 1987, and it was amended again in 2006 with the, with another amendment for the, and I'm forgetting the name of it. But those are the only two amendments to the zoning map that have occurred. This one, and you all, and Mr. Riley referenced it, is being incorporated as the 2000, or excuse me, the 1987 map, I think's very clear. And you also see, if you look at it closely, there are discrepancies in this map and the one that's shown in 2006. This is the last one that was adopted and approved by Town Council. The 1983 map, in full size, I have asked for a copy of that full map and it's not been produced to me. So what you have is the reduction, which is in, um... This is a photocopy of that. I, I believe that following the typical practice of how to determine the boundaries, you go to the statutes, you go to the ordinances, and you start from there. And I think that if it was me, I would look at 1987. I would, if I have to get a magnifying glass, which I did, and I'd make a recommendation that this town find the 1983 map wherever it is. And I've done a freedom of information and did not get a, and did not get a full-scale certified copy of that zoning map. And I think this town needs it. And I think if you want credibility, and the council wants a credibility, you follow the standard procedures that every zoning official, including this town's own zoning official, used. Adopt this map. If you want to change it, take Mr. Riley's advice and go through the process, change it. Get this straightened out so a developer can come to this town with confidence that it's not gonna change today, tomorrow, or by another interpretation or another colored map. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ead.
Mr. Riley? Has anybody tried to contact the successor? Whitman and Howard was bought out by some, a couple of times by major, by other corporations. But there's a success, there's some outfit that now has incorporated what was Whitman and Howard into a larger corporate structure. Has anybody tried to contact them to find out if they have on file the 1983 map?
Not to my knowledge.
Can anybody do that?
I can take, I can take your question under advisement, I can follow up on it, that's the best I can do. Thank you.
Could we also clarify what the intent of tonight's meeting is?
Sure.
Well, it's not, just so maybe I can ask it, and if I'm wrong, you or the legal can kind of correct me. My, my understanding of tonight, I know there's a lot of concerns about Somerset Ave, about the historical boundaries of the CBD. And history is obviously a guide, I think, to remember how to set the boundaries. But tonight is about where we're going to set the boundaries moving forward from today, moving forward. We're not trying to dictate, we are not acting as, we're not looking back historically. That's tonight's task for us. So any projects that have come before the board, been voted on here, are now in a process, moving forward. Board of Zoning Appeals, moving through the variance process. They are unaffected by tonight's vote, they're unaffected by where we set those boundaries. This is about the economic development and density of the town moving forward, and where we would like the CBD zoning to be. We're not trying to make interpretation on where it should have been, or where 1983 was, and where the lines could have been in the past. That is not the task of this board. And I just feel like from some comments, it's a little confusion about what we're being tasked with.
Well, I, well, I, please, please, I'm trying, we can't all speak at once.
And so to make sure that my interpretation of tonight's task is correct.
I, as the Chair, I think your interpretation is perfectly legitimate. If that's what your recommendation, if that's what you think should be recommended, then I think you have every right to do that. And if Mr. Riley thinks that it's not, then he has every right to say that in public comment. And we have to move forward, we have to do something. I mean, we cannot just continue to stay quiet and anonymous.
Then I, I need to go back to my letter by the attorney. And I hope that we would, that we were taking up the existing map, saying this is what the existing map was. Then if somebody wanted to change things, we could, the board could do whatever they wanted by way of recommending future changes.
With all due respect, if you're moving forward, you're not changing anything from the past. He's, 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 just right here if I'm wrong. What he's saying is, he's taking the past into consideration, but he wants to move forward.
If he wants, that's fine, but you have to start with what the existing zoning is.
And then if you want to make changes, you have to make those changes through the legal process. We could make a, I mean, mine, and the attorney is here, as you can comment on that. We could make a recommendation that we scrap all the previous maps and move forward. And then council could either accept that or not. I mean, we can make any recommendation we want. The maps are a picture of what... Hold on, hold on.
Go ahead and do it, if you're gonna do it.
The maps are a picture of the zoning. It describes what the zoning is, it doesn't create zoning. It describes, it depicts the zoning. The zoning is in place.
I agree with you, I agree with you.
What Chris was clarifying is that our recommendation, whatever our recommendation becomes, is to clarify what the zoning is.
Yes.
Okay? And that that effect should only be from today forward. That's all he was saying. In other words, in other, in other words, if Al has already made a decision and there's a process going forward on a property, what we're recommending to the board isn't to historically go back and make changes. We're not looking to recommend changes to the zoning. We're looking to clarify what it is. The map, the map boundary.
I should, this is a question of what it is and what it should, let's, let's, let's not have to go in back.
That's what we're gonna have to talk about.
And Attorney Stein is here, she can comment on it for us.
I just, speak with my back to folks. I just wanted to clarify one question, Robin Stein, I'm with KP Law, we're Town Council. So my, my understanding is that there's a current zoning map that is in some point of contention. And that the board is going through a process to help develop a new map going forward that will set the zoning map and what is in and what is not in different districts. And so they're looking for input from you folks about how you'd like to see zoning playing out going forward. What's not, I think, being discussed tonight and can be reviewed is to the extent to which any of those changes that they're ultimately adopted and posted and made pursuant to the process for changing a zoning map might implicate other projects or projects in process. But what the board's hoping to hear from you is to fix this problem that you're all talking about, which is that there's confusion over the, over the existing map. And so giving input to the board and saying, we would like to see this property in, we would like to see this property out, is a way to move forward and cure this problem. The impacts of that are something that if you ask us, we can look at and study. But I don't think you can say definitively, without even knowing what the recommendations are, how anything the board recommends tonight, in particular, this is a working group and it isn't part of the 48 process for changing zoning, would actually impact those properties. So I just wanted to clarify that, you know, there may be some additional study that's necessary to understand the impacts, but that this is a way to fix many of the problems that we're talking about by updating the map, creating a new map, and knowing definitively this is the map. So I just wanted to clarify that.
I have, I have point of inquiry. Please, please, could we all be respectful of each other and one person speak at a time? Please. Mr. Ead.
I'm confused about what this meeting is about and I'd like to have it clarified.
The agenda is pretty clear, it's a map discussion and recommendation. So we, we are hoping, if we can, to have some recommendation from tonight regarding what we believe the map should be or should clarify. That would be each member's decision. I mean, we, whatever Chris wishes to make as a recommendation, he's a member of the board, he has the right to do that.
Is this meeting, actually the meeting is to decide what's the proper, at this moment, not going forward, zoning boundaries are for the center? If that's what this is about, it's either one of two options that are, that sit there. The one that's under Form in Place and that process, or a more formal, regularized, as good practice dictates to figure this out. Or is this a meeting, it's a rezoning meeting that needs to be properly noticed that you're beginning a rezoning process? So what you, I don't, I'm confused.
This is a discussion to make a recommendation, Mr. Ead. I mean, what, that's...
So what are you going to recommend? Rezoning or clarification of the law?
We haven't even discussed it yet, so we don't know.
Well, I certainly don't know.
I don't, we don't even, we don't know what our recommendation is gonna be.
Mr. Chairman Frank Costantino, 82 Main Street, Precinct 2. On the point of Tom Riley's question having to do with the previous zoning maps, which I happened to do under the direction of Dick Dimes at the time, when he was a selectman, and also part of the Planning Board, is that the 1986 and the 2006, 7 are eight, depending on what date you apply. But both of those maps were... on what date you applied, but both of those maps were prepared by yours truly, and I had copies of both of those documents.
You said that's eighty-six. They asked the 1983 prior.
Eighty-three, eighty-seven.
Was it eighty-three or eighty-six? Because I'm, I'm, that's three different years I heard, eighty-three, eighty-six, and eighty-seven.
Well, honestly, I have to go back to verify the date, but that's, those, those, those zoning maps that were done, were done by yours truly in conjunction with Mr. Dick Dimes.
Eighty-three, eighty-six, and then amended as eighty-seven, and then adopted again, amended again, and closed to 2006.
Exactly. It was an amended version, uh, two amended versions, double the dictums. And I had final copies of both of those.
Wasn't that based on the eighty-three map, Mr. Pace map, when he did it?
But, but my, my understanding currently, the 2006 map is the one that where we're going on first. That's the one the town is using as its official map?
Jack, uh, the previous meeting, the last meeting you had, Mr. Boyce-
Mr. Director?
-agreed with me that the map should be very clear before any recommendation is made. He seems to have changed his thoughts on, from the previous meeting. A lot of people in this town, in this room in this town, that think about what has happened in the past three or four, five years. And we have people like Mr. McKenna aren't here, Mrs. Demalowis not here, and a few other key people that are not here to answer some of these questions that they started. They started a lot of questions, but they don't have an answer. A lot of people in this town think, most people, and people that are on boards and committees here in Wuthrum, are found hoodwinked, the public. You know, we have a gentleman here that made one opinion last month, and he changed his opinion in one month. You said, you said you wanted to clear the map. He asked me a question. I'm not, I'm not through with my, my statement.
I, I just want him to back and forth.
Well, I asked him a question, he answered it. A lot of people think we're being hoodwinked. I don't think this meeting is doing anything to clear those doubts. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman members, respectfully, James S. Eleven, three eighty-five Broadway, we here on behalf of Joanna Schwartz and Envelope Properties LLC, owners of ten dash twenty-six Somerset. And I agree with everybody in the room, and I certainly know that the board members, you, Mr. Chairman, are of the strong opinion that if you want to look at the zoning map and find out what the property is zoned for, it should not be an exercise in Rubik's Cube. But on the other hand, you can't take the 2006 map and take a look at it and stare at it, hoping that if you stare at it long enough, it's going to be something that you want it to be, as opposed to what it is. So, I've looked at all the maps that Frank has mentioned, that Tom has mentioned, that Dick Dimes has mentioned. I was at the meetings with Glenn Garber came in and was making his presentation to the planning board. He came over with his team from UMass Boston, and they were talking about updating the zoning maps and doing some of the things that would be beneficial to spurring development in certain quadrants of, of the town. All of those maps, when you look at them, they're all the same. They have different colors, they have different shades, but basically seventy-four, eighty-seven, two thousand six, if you're talking about the Senate Business District, they all include the same properties. I think, and I agree, that there should be some consistency, there should be some predictability. And I hope that the task of the planning board is not going to be to go back and second-guess Algee, or second-guess the Board of Appeals, or second-guess the mapmakers. I think the task at hand is to make a recommendation as to what the future map should be, what the 2019 or the 2020 map should be if it's adopted by the council. If the feeling of the planning board is that it should be different from what it is, then you'll make that recommendation, the council will have public hearings on it, they'll do all other things that are required by law. And if the council decides it's going to adopt a different map with different properties, different shades of color, on the color wheel, in different meets and bounds, then they'll do that. But this is not the forum, and I understand that there's a, there's some confusion, but I think that there's also a, a little bit of, we realize that you can't do it, but we want you to do it anyway. This decision as to what the map was when, like Ryan, Envelope Properties made its application to the town of Wuthrum for its development project. What was the zoning map and what were the boundaries on the day that that was made and it was advertised? That's going to be determined by the Board of Appeals. Mr. Leggie has made one determination. We've appealed it. That's where it goes. That's the only board in the 48 chain that has the authority to make that determination and override a building inspector. That's underway, and all of this has been aired out in a three-hour meeting, a, a public hearing, earlier, well, actually, late last month. And it will be continued on late this month. Probably, and at least from our perspective, whatever you do, and whatever you recommend to the council, and the council does, it's prospective. It's not going to change what Joanna's done. It's not going to change what she can do and can't do. So, I, I just would hope for my friends who are behind me, that I can break this fixation on, geez, this, you know, nineteen twenty-one map or something said, showed it in a different way. That's, that's just going to be spinning more wheels in the mud and getting us really nowhere. I, I just hope that the planning board kind of takes that into consideration. And whatever you do, we don't care what you do. Frankly, we are not going to be affected by it. Some other projects may be affected by it, and some of the neighbors may be affected by it. But we're not here to argue with you. We just want to make sure that when other people come to town, and it's going to affect the project, whether Joanna's is, you know, this high or that high, or whatever what it turns out to be in the end, that may be affected as well, as the neighbors and other business owners, by what the council does with your recommendation. And I know it's going to be a good one. I just wanted to make those couple of points. And by the way, and I, I know, Mr. Chairman, that you're, that you like digging into case, the case law, and I, I've heard you in the past cite cases from law books that are older than most of us, but the law does not require the council to adopt a zoning map. And that the ordinance can be supplemented by any map that the council had available and is suitable for that purpose. So when you say, when I hear argued, that, well, this was never adopted, that was never voted, you don't need to. It's referred to, when the, when the council adopted the zoning ordinance, it referred to the map, to the zoning map. And the zoning map that's referred to, right there on that laptop, and it's a 2006, 2006 map. And whether the 2014 was or wasn't adopted, a reference to the map is sufficient. Newburyport versus Thurlow, nineteen forty-nine. And actually, the site, Mr. Chairman, is three twenty-four mask forty.
Thank you.
Nineteen forty-nine, yeah. Thank you. And it's still good law.
Thurlow was the last, Newburyport versus Thurlow?
Thurlow, T H.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for clarifying also the status and current path of ten twenty-six, I think, for everybody.
When, when is, when is that hearing again?
Last, last Thursday of June. It was like twenty-seven, twenty-eight, whatever the date is.
Any further public, Mr. Riley?
You hope to avoid it, but, uh, because I asked in the beginning just what was gonna happen. My thought was that the board would take a look at the existing zoning, what's been voted, what's in place, and say, these are the boundaries. You've got some guidance to that effect, you've got the vote, I put it in front of you tonight, but as far as the Senate Business District goes, the nineteen eighty-seven vote of the town meeting that set those beats and bounds. If there's a desire on anybody's part to change that and to do something different, they can do that, but they have to go through that process.
The, the recommendation may be to change.
I know, but-
That's all I'm saying. We're, we're only in charge of making a recommendation.
So, but I, I don't know how you can change it if you don't know what you're changing. Okay? So, so in that regard, we've got a problem. Okay? We've got, they, for months and for years now, we kept hearing, houses on Cottage Park Road are in the Business District, the house on Bottom Road is in the Business District. It defies on any kind of imagination that that's, that's the case. We get a determination, Terry Delahanty goes through every vote that the town ever has taken on zoning and determines there are no houses in the Business District on Cottage Park Road, Somerset Avenue, Bottom Road. They, Algee says the boundary line between twenty, on, on Cottage Park Road, twenty Cottage Park Road is the, is, is in the Residential District. And so we don't know what's gonna happen. Okay? So in that regard, we, we, we did have an attorney work present us at the Board of Appeals meeting. She's put together a letter. I'll try to just go through it as quickly as I can.
I looked at it, it's right, and, and all due respect, it, it's just a little bit outside the scope of what we want to talk about. That's, that's, that's another board's hearing, it has to do-
No, it has, it doesn't. It doesn't. It has to do with the zoning here.
If we're not, we're not talking about the underlying zoning. We're talking about making a recommendation of a map going forward. That's what, that's what we're talking about.
And if that map going forward includes my house, the house next door, and the two houses across the-
You're still, you're still gonna have to have a public hearing on 48 to accept that recommendation, so.
So, okay, well, let's go back then. So then, if, if that's the case, then you're gonna come up with a map that doesn't include those properties, say that's the boundary, and-
We're not gonna come up with any map. We're only gonna come up with a recommendation. We're only making a recommendation, so I-
And recommendation to do exactly what-
Well, I don't know. I guess, I guess six members rather discuss it yet.
We've got one kind of chance to have a conversation in all of these meetings, in all this time. Not one word have we spoken to each other, and we're not by law allowed to talk outside of this room. So we have never heard each other's opinions, not once, because we're listening to everybody's comments.
We just, we haven't done that, we haven't had that discussion yet, Mr. Riley, honestly. So, you gotta let us talk about it a little bit.
I, I just want to go back again with the, the letter.
Again, I, I, I don't want, I mean, I'm trying to keep the meeting to just the scope of the map, because we, I, I got your letter, I appreciate it.
This is the scope of the map.
This is, you, you, you want to introduce the letter that your attorneys wrote to the zoning board of appeals.
No, no, I don't.
What's, what's I-
I want to introduce the, the, the letter that you wrote to the planning board.
Today.
Today.
I didn't even see this.
It's at your place.
Again, she, she's talking about zoning.
That's right.
She's talking about the underlying zoning. That's not, our agenda tonight is only a map discussion and recommendation, not the underlying zoning. We will have that on another night. Any changes to zoning would require a 48 public hearing. We're not doing that tonight. I don't want, I don't want to confuse apples and onions.
Can I quote from the letter? Okay? In the second paragraph, I write to you today relating to one of those issues. The boundary line of a Senate Business District is the, is the subject of the meeting. The determination of the boundary, of the zoning boundaries of a Senate Business District. That's what the letter's about.
That's her interpretation of what we're, what we're gonna do tonight.
No, that's what her letter's about.
Yeah.
Okay? And I'm not, well, since I'm not sure what it is, I tell you what, okay? She talks about the two determinations that were made, we, we've mentioned before, by by Algee and the inspector. Twenty Cottage Park Road has never been rezoned from Residential Business District.
Again, again, I, 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 I think, I don't want to be disrespectful. I, I understand what you're saying. I truly understand what you're saying, but it's just a little bit outside of the scope of what we're gonna discuss tonight. That's an underlying zoning issue. It's not a map issue for us.
If twenty Cottage Park Road, okay, which is up, that's the Business District, is in the Residential District, that certainly affects what you're doing, because that's the boundary line.
Our recommendation to be, to make that determination, we don't know. Your, your, your attorney is saying that it's not. We don't, we, we don't-
No, she's saying that the man is before you, tonight.
Right.
She's saying what action she thinks you should take.
Okay. I'm saying we haven't got to that point yet. We have, we have to have that-
Again, I don't want to be disrespectful, and I don't want to think out of order, but again, Mr. Demento.
Yes. Robert Demento, Precinct Three. This is, I understand where you're going, but you gotta understand, I was at the same meeting that Mr. Sipola, the Board of Appeals is gonna be lawyer stuff, because there's two separate issues here, and they're gonna determine it in court. We're talking about what you're doing, and I'm saying, we and most of the people in this room are asking you to do the common sense thing. These have been residential properties, always understood by the owners, always, nobody's done anything. In your wisdom, if you make these lines and bring them to the council within reason, these are residences, that have always been residents, they haven't been businesses. So that's what I'm asking you and your determination to do this, and don't be leaning to the developer, lean to the citizens. I sat the appeals board and was disgusted with the appeals board openly saying that they were in favor of the developers. They're supposed to be following the law, exactly what the lawyer quoted and read into the meeting. So again, what I'm asking you, gentlemen and ladies, to do is the common sense thing for the neighbors and the citizens, and look at the neighborhoods and what they've always been. Thank you.
Mr. Dimes?
I, very frankly, I think that you shouldn't even be thinking of going for any board at this time, because I don't think this is getting anywhere. To be, to someone to walk into a meeting like we did tonight, and be presented with a zoning map of two oh oh six, is not good government. Let's face facts. Now, I think that you as the board, to keep your, now bear in mind, you people are a strong board. The planning board, you should keep it in mind, you people, many, many times had the final say. You aren't even near that yet, and neither is the town near that, and neither is the developer near that, who came out of, came out of nowhere. All of a sudden, now look, I, many years, and we go back to town meeting, and things like this developed, when we went in a town meeting, there were someone that wanted to do something with their property, something that might have been the center and so forth. It was kicked around, and we voted. But you aren't even near that, and I don't think the town is near that yet. We've got a situation here that over the years, those that were, those that were alive at that time, and were involved at that time, came in certain years and had brought in a certified engineering firm to do some changes. That's how it was done. We're not near that. You, you're just playing a game here. It doesn't make sense. Do you, what right did that young lady come before this town, decide you was gonna put a condominium up? Tell me that. Have you got anything on the books that said we have condominiums? So, so why are we, why are we talking? I'm, I'm, I'm saying that, oh, we've got, we've got the appeals board has to make a decision whether to let this company go ahead and build a condominium. Well, why did you have the right to come into town? We had no law. We didn't have anything on the books that told us that we want condominiums in the center, that we allow condominiums in the center. We are far away from coming up with the right decision. And I think, in my honesty, I think you should just close this meeting off and say, have you not even gonna think of it, because I think it does not. You're not gonna come up with the right answers to begin with. There is impossible to even come up with the right answers.
Thank you. Yes. The council, excuse me.
I was told that I was requested to be at this meeting, so I'm here. I'd like to know why I'm here, but I'd also like to say that we've appeared, I believe, on the council to receive a map from you, so that we can make the recommendations and rules and ordinance and pass and certify a map. That's what this meeting is all about. We'd like you to do that. We'd like you to present it to us as soon as possible, so we can go through the process of having, you know, rules and ordinance meeting on it, open hearing on it, open hearing on it, and that's gonna take some months. So, and we're only gonna meet on July second after this eighteenth meeting, and then once in August. So, the sooner you can get it to us in a form that we can then vote on it as a council, the better. In my personal opinion, there should be no single-family or two-family houses in it. All the houses that were in that map on, in the 2014 map must have been a mistake.
Okay.
The 2006, there's not that many houses in it, and when M A T C put out that map, they added those houses. They should take it back up. It's my vision. Of course, the whole council has to vote on it. You have to make the recommendations. But let's get it done, because it's, it's dragging on and on. Now, does anybody have questions for me to just ask if I can be here?
No. Please sit and wait, just in case we do have questions.
Thanks.
Frank?
You're giving a thing away.
You're giving a thing away.
Yeah, Frank Costantino again. The thing I'm not clear about in your, you know, creating these diagrams...
Please, please.
The thing I'm not sure about in your creating these diagrams...
Please, please. Tell me to speak.
Yes. The thing I'm not clear about in your creating these diagrams is the criteria that you're applying in order to define these zones. You talk about it in the planning board guidelines having to do with the character of the town, having to do with the quality of life, having to do with pedestrian access, having to do with vistas, having to do with the, an appropriate mix of the residential and the commercial together, having to do with density issues, having to do with walkability, having to do with the movement of traffic and automobiles within the different constricted streets that we have in town. These are quantitative issues that should be the criteria that come into the decision-making in the evaluation of where these zones are actually laid out. I understand that we do have the inertia, if you will, of zones that ought to have been established that are being used for commercial purposes, but I think also extending those or changing those to some degree is gonna have an impact in all of these different areas that are referred to. For example, what's happened on Washington Street by converting a lot of the single private homes that had happened over a period of time into condos has resulted in what used to be a beautiful broad boulevard type of effect along Washington Street is now totally destroyed because we have parking lots in front of a lot of those houses. What used to be frontage of planting and green screen space and a beautiful walkability as you looked up to us, Crystal Cove and the harbor, has now been destroyed because you have to have automobile. That's also part of your planning is to establish this criteria, and the criteria is related to the quality of life and the character of the town you refer to specifically in the planning board guidelines. So I just caution and or at least strongly suggest that you think about those things as you're developing the boundaries for this new zoning map. Thank you.
Mr. Vitaleala.
Thank you, Mr. Vitaleala. John Vitaleala, please. I would like you to start off, Mr. Gentlemen, by saying that in the meetings that I've been at, I wanted to compliment you on the way you've run these very difficult meetings and these very difficult subjects. You've done a terrific job in terms of the town. I compliment you for that. I would like to recommend strongly that the planning board post home is color determinations to present a zoning map to the town council, primarily because I think it would be a classic case of putting the cart before the horse. You just had a very articulate presentation by Frank Costantino, that for real dispute within the town, various levels, as to what you go where, and clearly the planning board plays a instrumental role in that, along with other official boards within the town, the appeals and the town council and others, and obviously the town manager and all of it. But until some of those underlying issues such as what was just laid out by Frank Costantino are resolved first, to me, it's just pre-retro, putting the cart before the horse to try to make a regulation on a zoning map to reflect what those underlying uses and values in a town ought to be before they are properly resolved. So I strongly recommend to the, the planning board not to go forward to propose a specific zoning map tonight until these underlying issues are resolved. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Very good. Appreciate it. That's a great show. Mr. Nead, did you wanna comment?
As long as the purpose of this meeting is to move forward, I think the process that got us here was unclear, and I think you should develop a process to look at this. I would suggest to you one, however, and it's the process that's generally used by zoning officials, people that write zoning, when they're trying to look at a map and what a map should be. I mentioned a deficiency in the two thousand and seven map. It's that the boundaries are not, between districts are not clearly stated there as they were in the nineteen eighty-three map. Chapter seventeen point oh eight oh zero, oh one zero clearly states, "The zoning districts set on in this chapter are shown on the zoning map dated November seventh, nineteen eighty-two." And what distinguishes that map from the map in two thousand and seven is that in the code, there are three ways to determine a boundary, the center line. In the Winthrop zoning code, there are three ways to determine a boundary. One is the center line of a street, alley, or railway. Distances from those center lines are noted in feet on the map. Otherwise, you can revert to, and I'll quote this, meets and bounds, which is not on that map, or a property line shown on the town tax assessment maps. Those maps are upstairs, they're full scale, they're easy to read. No place in what would be typical and in this town in your ordinances to determine a property line as a line that's arbitrarily through people's properties. I think that's a process you can go through to make a recommendation that people can agree on what it is if the council wants to change it, or then they can go into an appropriate method of changing the ordinances in the map, but there will always be a cloud unless you can clearly determine where those lines are at on that two thousand and six map, which I think it's pretty clear you can't do that.
Thank you. All right, I think we can open it up to the board for comments. Vinnie, would you like to go first, or you wanna start with Gina to go last?
You can go. You want me? I'll go. So I understand the motivation by some in the town, historic, median, currently, to put even one residential lot between a commercial building and a residential area because it has that a butter, right? So now a developer can go up four. I don't think that they should be included. I think that the maps, the way that they were overlaid here, to me, clearly just don't make any sense and don't look like any sort of intent that was originally. It just doesn't make any sense to me. And so when I go through the map, so we all got this map that has the numbers so that we aren't discussing parcel addresses. In my opinion, and it gets a little difficult over near the rural terrace sort of Metcalf Square area, and I think we should talk about it, but from a high level conceptual perspective, I think that we should be taking all of the residential ones, the ones that clearly have one family out of the C B D.
So I would say that to some degree, I agree with you, but if there's like a single family that's then between two businesses, I don't think that we really should be discontinuing.
I agree. I think that we need to go through each sort of area.
Yeah, I think Gina was just starting over Cottage Park somewhere.
Yeah, like on the left side of the...
One other thing, if we do that, I think we have to amend the dimensional regulations for height because I think what we'll end up doing is we'll have some very thin C B D zones that are but residential districts, and it'll essentially turn an entirely really good usable lot into something closer to residential. So I think we need to amend the height a little bit so that there's a, it doesn't just say the whole lot is whacked up, is cut off at that height, but that there's some setback at the residential zone that can work its way up to the main height.
I would consider that. Gina, can you put it into your, just so I understand you, that the, you want anything that's clearly residential out of the map, but how would we put that?
So for example, and so I've done...
Just define a line.
Yeah, I mean, we can go through, I've done a line, I used Chris's marker, he's done the same thing. So for example, if you're looking at Somerset coming down, those other facets, it seems to be controversial. I think fifty dash fifty-six on Somerset on that side of the street is the only thing. It's the only part. And I think it cuts across so that across Cottage Park Road, almost in a straight line. I mean, it seems pretty obvious to me it's a straight line.
To ten twenty-six.
To ten twenty-six. So that one dash seven, all the way up Cottage Park Road is not in the C B D.
Jill, may I ask you a question about, if you don't know, top of your head, is there a case law or a statute on point that says we can use what Mr. Dement, is there a common law approach that if something looks residential, it's residential, if it looks commercial, it's commercial? Is there case law on point to that? Or no? Gina? If you don't know, then...
The order of zones is defined on that.
Okay. So where did Dement turn?
I don't know, I understand, but what I'm saying, is there like a common, is there a common sense approach that you could say this looks like a house, this looks like this looks commercial?
We're looking.
Can you do that?
You need to have a policy for that as you create a map. That is not like, in my opinion, I can tell you a quarter from yours.
We're looking for the highest and best use of the C B D district.
Protecting the neighborhoods.
So there has been a process in place, there was a master plan that established, you know, guidelines for what the C B D should be. That's the master plan, as I understand, was a dattle by the town council. So we have enough institutional knowledge to determine where these boundaries should be moving forward. So I don't think we're trying to say, la siesta is here and there's a house next door, that should be the line, trying to say, what is the highest and best use of this street of heights and density requirements as we move forward?
Okay, so here's what I'm trying, is there a, is there a specific rule that helps guide you what the highest and best use is, or how do you make that determination?
Mr. Costantino, left with me, what he was referencing are objectives that are outlined in the master plan, and there are objectives that urban planners will use towards cities, so it's vistas, it's pedestrian access, it's cut-throughs, it's parking, you know, so that is why the master plan process is so important in helping us determine what these boundaries today should be.
So if we, if we put that in a recommendation that says the posses of the zone should be the highest and best use, then that would clearly define what we...
No, we need to, we need to show a picture.
I think this is, the can has been kicked down the road too long, and while it's...
Yeah, I think we should give the high level beliefs and our opinion is and why we're drawing the line where we think we are drawing.
So rather than going like lot by lot, I think using the guidelines of the master plan and the town's goals is set forth in that master plan for economic development, residential density, and I think that it's natural that the vernacular of a coastal seaside town is to have a vibrant, pedestrian-friendly town center. I think the town as it's laid out and constructed now as nodes of retail on multiple corners throughout town, then all that does is guide vehicular traffic up and down as you travel from one retail node to the next. So the goal, in my opinion of this C B D, is to kind of try to create and codify a town center. Height goes along with that, having mixed use goes along with that. If you only have a single-story retail at the base without anyone living in the town center, you don't get the pedestrian vibrancy. I think a seaside New England town is kind of known for it, these little vibrant walkable centers. So by adding the height, which zoning already has done, and you have this forty-five-foot height, you now have people living above the retail below, it activates that retail, it helps those retails not to lease out. So these things are, I think, are all important to determining where these lines should be. I think we also, you know, the people in the room have commented, and I think people in the board know the town well enough, you've walked around the neighborhood well enough to know in some logical sense of where we feel the lines may be more familiar. You know, so when I look at the master plan and the current map, I think some things, which I know have been before the board, I know there's a lot of concern, it's also my opinion, I shared with Gina, that fifty dash fifty-six on Somerset and ten dash twenty-six are kind of the last buildings of the C B D, they're the last nodes of that corner. As you go up Cottage Park Road, none of those homes, I don't see any real land use benefit to including those homes as future commercial sites. Those should stay as residential sites, that should be a residential street, all those homes that are kind of behind the parking lot or banks, I mean, that is part of the nature of you go down a walkable residential street and you arrive at this town center. So to activate those corners, ten twenty-six and fifty dash fifty-six, I think those are nodes of activity. I think a setback maybe makes sense at a different meeting, but I think those are important. I think a lot of the outlines of the C B D we can walk through, and they're not far off from where the boundary lines fall on the M A P C map. The two areas that I, or three areas that I think I would add to this at the opportunity we have, is we'd already passed a recommendation as the planning board to include the middle school site in the C B D. I think I'd like to codify that in today's discussion. The houses on Waldemere, nine fifteen nineteen, those stay Res A, those are not included in it, which means that that buffer site on the edge has a lower height requirement until you get farther into the middle school.
I thought that we had talked about way back when that that area shouldn't exactly be the same...
Townhomes along that edge.
Well, no, it shouldn't be necessarily the same C B D designation, and it might be a C B D version B.
Which we haven't established, so I think, you know...
Right, but I can't remember that...
Without rewriting zoning all over again, to give an opportunity now to include this in the C B D, and, you know, I know that the C B D version two is looking for more height.
So I would also say that I think that it's imperative to alter this height limit with a setback at the same time the map changes. I don't think you can do one way or another.
I don't think that's the task for us. I think that maybe...
Like, what I'm saying, what I'm saying is...
Can you point to something specific and explain like...
Okay, so the height limit in the C B D is, I mean, the exception here, two and a half stories, thirty-five feet adjacent to a residential district, or four stories, forty-eight feet otherwise.
Right.
So if you've got an entirely large lot...
Like that, when I say by specific, can you point to an entire, like an example?
So let's say, let's say fifty fifty-six, or even...
I don't think we wanna get into a zoning change conversation, to be honest. I don't, I don't think we wanna get into a zoning change conversation. I don't think the meeting is...
I think that they're tied together because otherwise, I, okay, so like if you say that, then I'm gonna back one lot off and say, you include that last house in the C B D. Because otherwise, you've taken the entire, let's say, ten twenty-six lot and said it's gonna be two and a half stories tall. You can never get that into density at a time of doing lot.
Well, I can see, it can see the variance. It still has to drive a simple house for the middle school, as well as...
I don't think it's that hard to say, to say, let's do this step, let's alter this...
See, that's what I was saying when I first started talking. I can see the motivation for someone to add that one buffer parcel for that purpose.
Right, for that purpose, and that's why I'm saying...
But I don't, you know, respectfully, I don't agree with that because I don't agree with doing it because you're doing that at the expense of whoever owns that piece of property, and the lot next to it that is in the C B D, they can ask for a variance.
Right, but why not just fix it and address the issue?
Because it's impactful to the neighbors.
Right, but that's why I'm saying if you do a, if you do a...
Can we ask, we go over quickly, to me, are we enabled to change zoning at the same time the map is being...
But if we're offering a recommendation, can't we just add that to the recommendation?
You can make the recommendation, but...
So the purpose of the meeting tonight is to discuss the map, and certainly there are going to be concerns and discussions in the map that relate to underlying zone. Ultimately, if the town wants to change the map or it wants to change, there's a process that it has to go over, and if it chooses to do both at the same time, it can, but it doesn't happen. So I mean, if your recommendation is, we'd like to see these changes in the map, but we think there often needs to be some zoning changes to go with it, that's something that the council will want. Because it's gonna come back to ultimately for a public hearing on either map change or zoning change, and you'll have another public hearing on the back change. So your recommendation could include, we think these are, this is what a new map going forward should look like, however, if you're gonna make these changes, we'd also like the council to recommend, you know, changes to underlying zoning that need, that and that makes sense.
Thank you. So I am, very, so I wanna give an example on the flip side of what you're saying, okay? I completely hear what you're saying, as well. I, I completely hear what you're saying, as well. But if you look at one oh five dash oh seven, which is on the bottom of, like, closest to you, that long piece of land that has like, that looks like Battleship.
Yes, that is, that's.
It's off Hagman.
Hagman Road.
That goes up the middle of.
Right, it's like right in the center there. It honestly looks like Battleships from Game Battleship and those buildings. I think that that parcel should be included in the CBD, okay? But I like the fact that it's abutting directly all of these residential, you know, one families. So because it's in the middle of all this, we're not building four or five feet, like, stories high. It, because of that, will need to stay low.
So what's.
Because it shouldn't have like these humongous buildings sticking out of the backyards.
So what I'm saying, I agree.
Of someone's house.
But, but that's why I'm saying this should change to help both parties, so.
But see, again, isn't that what a variance is?
Well, but if it's, if it's clear in the original zoning, then a developer will know ahead of time and that abutters will know.
Okay. So would you be comfortable, in our recommendation, we pointed out as a concern that we would like the council to be thoughtful of and address?
Because what I'm thinking should do both, if, in a, in a narrow skin lot like that, if you say, okay, at the lot line you can go, except you'll have a setback, so there'll also be a setback. You aren't necessarily building to the lot line, but you'll start your height line at the lot line, just so everything's covered. You go up twenty-five feet, you go up one-to-one, so when you're at the ten foot setback, you're at that thirty-five foot height limit, and then you go up in a one-to-one.
So you have like a stair-like effect.
Exactly, until you hit the final height limit. That's one of my. And I also.
So you're saying every ten, every ten feet of setback allows ten feet of height?
Yes.
So within the CBD, you're allowed, so you're, just so I clarify, your forty-five-foot height requirement at the boundary lines which we're establishing today.
I'm, see, I would.
Every ten.
No, I was going to go down to twenty-five feet at the lot line, because.
Understood, so at the lot line you're twenty-five feet.
Yeah.
So then every boundary line, ten feet in, you go to thirty-five.
Yep.
Twenty feet in, you go to forty-five, which becomes the zoning.
Exactly.
Create like the buffer for the eye, so it's not like a huge build at any on the sidewalk.
And I also wanted to, there seemed to be some indication that somehow zoning had to follow lot lines, but our zoning code does have a paragraph on how to deal with lots.
It does, we talked about it last, in the last meeting.
Okay, alright.
It doesn't necessarily have to follow up lot lines, it can cut through.
I mean, it's nice when it does, but there, there are some spots where you.
Well, that's one of the things, right now we have the opportunity, I believe, and correct me, council if I'm wrong, but we have the opportunity to make them clean lines if we, if we can. I know we don't have to, when we have it in the zoning, that it doesn't have to be, so there are areas that we may not be able to, but.
But, no, I, it's, it makes things easier for everyone, yeah.
So to back up Gina's comment, I think that Hag, in terms of major additions, and I think we can, you know, we can go a lot, a lot. I think the Hagman Road Development one oh five oh seven, the highest and best use of that lot is, is, I think, to include it with potential setback language, with, or within the CBD. The only way to actually be a useful development there, or to see that property increase into, into something will be to include it in the CBD.
Would you go all the way down and include the entire lot?
Yeah.
Yes.
It actually makes sort of a hook up to the right, includes that little piece on Puckham Street, and then cuts back behind ninety-three, eighty-seven, eighty-one, and seventy-five, and then cuts back over.
You say include that?
It does not.
Does not include that?
So it kind of cars that. Cars, cars those or houses outside.
Outside of the CBD. Okay, because those, you know what those battleships are, right?
Yeah, they're kind of, they're apartment buildings.
Well, that's housing.
Yeah. Right now it is.
But it's pretty low as.
I, what, what we're saying is, yes, it is, but.
Yeah, I mean, it's housing now, and I think that if you look at the growth of the CBD, and look at that area, and if you don't include it, there's, there's very little opportunity to ever develop that site.
Right.
If you do include it, you're incentivizing future development, and you could, that could be great pedestrian thoroughfare coming down Hagman Road and its continuation. There could be more housing along it, I mean, I think there's an opportunity.
Developers really.
It could, it could stay as it is, but, but without including it, I think that there's no opportunity. The other area that I'd include within the CBD that's currently not is that Business A District over on Winthrop Street, which has now become the Mason Zone, and I think the Imperial Homes. That, that zone area.
The Meat Market Brown area.
Offers another opportunity, disconnected, but for another smaller center. I mean, it's, it's a large space, it's Business A now, and I think that this offers the opportunity to take this, can yield something.
Where, where was that, Chris?
So, with the street. So it's.
Like where the, where the flower shop is, where Brown is, where the Meat Market is.
You look at two ten. Ten.
It's in, it's, it's Business District.
Six, twelve, one eighty, one seventy-four, those are, those are Business A. CBD comes right down to touch this, I think this is, might have been, this was a former place recommendation you guys, you guys looked at.
Yeah, it's the, it's the pink part of the.
So just the west side of the street?
No, I think both sides.
Both sides, yeah.
Alright, I just want to recognize David Rodriguez, who wants to comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to the members, and thank you to the public who provided some pretty good insight on how to move forward. We want to be able to be a resource to the planning board, to the public, to get something that reflects the will of the board. If you want us to take your recommendations down and return back to you with a reflection of those recommendations, or reflection of those suggestions, we can do that. Including, wait, I just saw Dave's.
That's why I laughed, sorry, I ruined it.
So we're having, I mean, we're, we're, we're professional staff, we're going to do this all day long, and we're happy to do that in order to take some pressure off of you, and to incorporate comments that were from the public, comments that were from the board, including some of the zoning changes. It may be improper to discuss the zoning changes, because meanwhile, we didn't publicly notice that part of the deed. But if there are certain things you want to see, you can reach out to us one-on-one, and we can start incorporating those things.
Well, would it be possible if you just created a draft and then just.
That's exactly what I'm.
That's good.
Clean the draft up to make sure.
Have a draft of your consideration that you can amend, take under consideration, and then recommend, if you feel appropriate, to the town council, we can leave it in the forty A section five process. So that's, we're happy to be a resource in any way that could make this easier for the board and the public. Who wants, we're trying to chart that forward, we're trying to be independent, so we want to chart out those.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
David, wouldn't be.
You talking to me, David?
No, listen. An honest suggestion, I, I realize what you say, regards to whether it should be a meeting or not, that's going to do basically with, with our recommendation, so I, I mean, I think it should be able to be discussed.
There, there are any, there's no, there's no saying that they're not interconnected. It's just because of the notification to the public, that, so there might be.
No, no, I, I, I agree with you saying, but in, I don't know how to first render a decision, that being part of it.
If you'd like to give us marching orders, or what you'd like to see, it's going to be a resource to try to make that, or codify that.
That's happening.
And start, and start working on that, so that we publicly notice it for the next meeting, if it's appropriate, we can continue.
So what makes the recommendation of follow-up recommendations?
So we, we, I understand this is going to be an evolutionary process, we're, we're trying to be, yeah, publicly.
This area. Benny, I'd love to hear your thoughts on all of this.
Getting back to what Anna had said, you know, we keep going back to the same thing all the time, with, all I hear is dates about maps. But I've, I've never seen nothing about the eighty-three map, or the eighty-seven map, or anything else. Everybody talks about it, but yet no one's handed it to us, so like, I've never seen it.
It's funny, it's funny, you hand it out, and I, I.
Is this, is this modern, what's it?
No, no, it's this, it's this document here, I gave it to the clerk, distributed to.
This one here? Is, is this what you say, with eighty-seven?
That's nineteen eighty-seven, voted at the town meeting.
Okay.
And I, and I also emailed a copy of it to the planning board within the last week.
Okay, glad I didn't get the email, but, okay.
And I, and I've also provided a whole set of maps to the, to the planning board.
That, that I got.
Going back and including nineteen eighty-three now. Thank you.
Good.
Quick, again, do I feel, just piggyback a little bit off of what Benny is saying. You know, we've heard nineteen eighty-three, nineteen eighty-six, nineteen eighty-seven, two thousand and six. Are we bound by earlier maps when we made our recommendations? Is that the state, is that the law? Do you know?
I mean, if you're, if you are recommending and saying, going forward, we think this document should be designed.
Okay.
Then that's your recommendation. Now, from a policy perspective, you certainly may want to consider the part maps. But the whole purpose of this is you're amending, if you're creating a new map, so you're free to make those recommendations, and the council's free to take them or not take them.
In the actual motion that we adopted, who would say that now thereby amending all former maps, this is the.
You know, I can, I can understand, and I appreciate historically, what if, you know, the decision's got to be made one way or the other to, to, to move forward. And that's why I'm, I'm in favor of what Anna said, in regards to making that change at the same time. Supposedly, we were supposed to come, to make our building apartment a lot easier for people to come in and get things done, and it's actually gone and gone the other direction. This isn't nineteen seventy no more, this is two thousand and nineteen, and things change. And we need to do something, you know, pretty quick before we end up going down the tubes. I mean, one way or another, if you look at everything around us, in regards to whether it be Chelsea, Ezea, Everett, South Boston, Charlestown, or whatever, they're thriving way beyond, and, and we, we need to be able to do something, one way or another, to be able to get a piece of that for the, for the town, I mean, for the entire benefit of the whole town. And we're not in that direction. I don't care what anybody says, you know, and, and it's, it's a ripple effect with employees and everything else. But getting, getting back to, to the, the initial maps and whatnot, I think if, if we do it, we need to do it correctly and make the other changes, to go along with it so it sits side by side, and there's no issue down the road. I'm, I'm a little bit tired of, of, okay, well, we'll put that aside, we'll take care of this, that takes care of them, and then in a year, a year later, we're coming back from the same thing. Despite, you know, whether you agree with me or not, and shake your head no, or yes, I mean, that's just, that, that's my opinion. What we're going to do is, we, we need to do it right, and, and add this other stuff, and include everything together in one, in one package.
So you agree with where possible and where it makes sense.
Correct.
Excluding the residential properties, but including in our recommendation to town council, a proposal to have the steps.
Correct, along with the steps, setbacks, yes.
David, Anna?
I think the step backs is a good idea with the, any of the residential houses out there, there's several that were closed over here, making sure that everybody's happy with the CBD or the residents. Could be a medium road.
Yeah, something we just discussed over here, and I guess I wanted to get a little bit of form of places comment on it, was, we, we talked about the Hagman Road Development, and then we kind of moved the line, so it cuts across behind lot seventy-five on Puckham Street. We excluded seventy-two on Puckham Street, the large home in the kind of Putt, Putnam Place terrace there, to bring the line up to the old theater. That Fremont Street look, which is, these are all residential, single-family or two-family homes.
Correct. Correct. The only one I'm not sure about is fifty. Is that a business?
Right behind the.
Right behind the theater? I feel like it's a real estate company or something.
It says Ida.
That, like, so fifty might need to be included.
I think that's Jefferson's.
Yeah, on Jefferson. But then we were carving out, but then we were carving out forty-six, fifty-one, forty-five, thirty-five, twenty, all the way down.
We left from Burl Terrace down to Jefferson Street. That mark of all residential in rez A cannot include in CBD.
Which side?
Is.
From Burl Terrace moving planned south, twenty-two down to Jefferson Street. Twenty-two to twenty-nine, so I guess that area, because it disconnects these kind of two nodes, I guess was a, that was the one area that I've really kind of had a question as to how best approach it. Should it come, should it cross Jefferson Street, and everything gets upzoned on Fremont Street in there? From Burl Terrace south, because it feels odd to cut a line.
So that you get a nice lot.
Well, that and that whole Burl Terrace, Pauline Street, that Cap Square area is confusing for me also.
And it offers something for the, the ten, ten thirty-four, that the front parking lot, Michael's Place convenience. I mean, it offers future goals there. The hope of the setbacks, I guess, is if you have the line directly behind it, is that if there was, I mean, just if there was that development there, then it'd have to push it out towards Puckham Street.
Well, you have a piece of property that's there, it's a commercial piece of property.
No, totally.
The old MSA?
Well, that's across the street, but twenty-two, I believe, Burl Terrace would be the old moving place.
Do you remember?
Yeah, so that area, I'm wondering about, Benny, you probably.
Whether some of them should be included.
I'm wondering if that should be, that zone from, from Jefferson to Burl Terrace should be included in CBD, upzone? And then, then you're connecting that, the backside of the Mason, because of the Imperial Homes to CBD and making.
So you would include all of these.
I'm wondering, I guess, I wanted to know maybe what the form of places would all of that, you know, like.
Absolutely, okay, so, Michael, wait, please. I, I, at first I just wanted to make a clarification, that there were some statements made.
Please, can we, he's, he's trying to speak.
Yeah, no, but there were some statements made earlier that weren't exactly accurate, and there really is no particular map that Form, that Form Place drew that's being considered per se. We did a graphic analysis of, of the two thousand and fourteen map and the two thousand and six map. I, I, I agree very much with the comment that, you know, if you take away the residential buffers along the perimeters of those CBD, you are, you have to realize that you are greatly impacted with the development potential of those sites on the perimeter, even if we do the setback approach, those, I, I just because of, if you look at the land use map that NA PC produced years ago, there are twenty-five to thirty residential properties within the CBD and the Business A districts, both inside and along the perimeter of it. So I don't, you know, zoning boundary is not a land use boundary, is it? So I think you should be super cognizant of the fact that you're, if you do remove all of those residential lots on the perimeter, you are going to be impacting the development potential of some of those, what now will be commercials, these properties that are on, on the boundary. I do, I've always liked the idea of, of connecting along Jefferson Street from the Winthrop corridor to French Square. It feels like that would, that's a very logical place to sort of get a more holistic opportunity for a cohesive CBD district. And. Yeah.
Michael, can you talk about what that, what the consequences of that zoning might mean for the existing, pre-existing?
Well, like. Well, I mean, I think in general, upzoning is, you know, it's beneficial to the homeowners and their location. And, I mean, I think there is the parcel that's just.
Yeah, we can't hear.
Planed south of Burl Terrace is, and that is, I didn't believe a storage facility or a business.
Yeah, twenty-two.
Yeah.
That was an old movie company.
So.
So just because I don't think everyone heard it. Did you say that the upzoning, if we were to include this whole inner, like, this whole block here, the Fremont, Pauline Street, that Cap Square, Jefferson Street, all of those, your understanding is that the only impact it would have is that it would make the property more valuable? Is that what you just said? I just want to make sure I heard what you said.
Well, I, I'm not aware of it.
Well, I mean, I, no, it's just your opinion, where just they asked, David asked your opinion, and you gave it, and I don't think anyone heard it.
Well, so I just think both with some of the parcels that are north of Pauline Street, the little tool site there, if you're looking for future development opportunities for, you know, having a cohesive center business district, I believe that that pocket there on Fremont Street, as well as the north of Pauline, in my opinion, would be a good location to have in the CBD.
If you have a question, so, so, David, you have a question from a legal perspective on the impacts of some of these changes? Then I would recommend, if it works for the board, that one staff has an opportunity to put that draft map and propose a lot of changes together, then they're going to come back at meetings, be discussed again. But we can certainly look at, at the impacts of any particular changes of those that the board are concerned about. But I can't just sit here and guess at those without, you know, the property history that's going on there, and what those changes would be, but I certainly think that that'd be part of the conversation, and we can look at it. think that that'd be part of the conversation, and we can look at it for future needs.
Chris had mentioned a little while ago that we had felt that this would be a good opportunity to bring the middle school area in, excluding 915, 19, and 21. I would also add to that that I think we would include on the corner of Herman and Pauline Street, even though there are some two or three families on the corner, all of those lots as well. Does anyone have any opinion on either of those?
915, 21, dash, 1, something like that.
Yeah, 1-dash-9, 14, and 16.
I'm not there.
Yeah.
Right there.
Lucky spot, scores, passing town hall, right in these firms.
Oh, no. Yeah, that are kind of expanded in there, just to get to the property line.
And how do you guys feel about including the middle school in this recommendation?
Well, do we, what do we think the future of the middle school is?
Not much if it doesn't give a no.
Yeah, absolutely.
Exactly, so. It's, I can't remember why we were thinking, what I wanted to get back to was that meeting where we discussed it, and we said, well, maybe it's a CBD type B, what it was about the, if there were, if there was a specific renovation, a specific-
It's a park.
I, there were a couple concerns that we had. One of them, I think, was what you were trying to address with the stairs setback.
Okay, all right.
That we had said, you know, I think a lot of us agreed that wouldn't it be nice if there were townhouses on the side of Waldemar that butted the residential area? So it was sort of a transition effect going from the residential into where, whatever it be, fire station, police station, rec center, ring, whatever it is that gets put there.
I think maybe part of it was that in the CBD zoning, there's a-
There's a public use.
You, Derek, it's looking to not have residential on the first floor, and so maybe it would be nice to have some of that, although we could start out with it being in the business, in the CBD, and maybe there's a whole way at some point, but that would be at least a start to get that.
I agree.
All right.
Yeah, I mean, I know the concerns we're talking about with residential, current land use residential may include in the CBD, and I guess when we talk about Cottage Park Road, Somerset Ave, first Fremont Street, I mean, they just feel like the opportunity for different characters. You come down Cottage Park Road, you feel like you want to be in a residential neighborhood before you arrive down at that corner, those want to be residential homes. I think that they stay as we were kind of dictating earlier. I think the difference, though, is from Jefferson Street to Burrell Terrace, it offers the opportunity long-term to kind of connect this larger space together.
Well, I agree with you, and I also feel like because there are businesses on Winston Street and the businesses here, almost, these houses almost look this place.
Fremont Street feels like it wants to be residential up to Jefferson.
Right, similar to going down Cottage Park Road and coming down.
Yeah, you want to activate the corners of Jefferson Street.
Well, and connect that sort of walkability of businesses together and not interrupted with, you have the sense of, oh, wait, did it stop? Do I turn around now? Rather than the possibility that that whole area-
Yeah.
...reads as a walkable center.
And just, can I ask a legal question?
Go ahead.
You should like do that.
I like the warning on that.
So if we were to include such a substantial change like that in our recommendation, that it would still have to go through the 48 process, they would have to, the owners would be notified, that whole legal process still goes forward, right? For these parcels that we would be recommending a change?
Any changes that, any changes that you are gonna have to follow the process of 48 by?
I just, I didn't want anybody to walk out of this room and be like, oh, those, you know, those people, they just got sideswiped or something, like, because they're not here right now.
No, no, any, any changes will have to go through the full 48 by posting, public hearing, referral from the council, everything.
All right, Dave, please just walk me through, you all suggested, and you're gonna prepare a draft recommendation, so let me understand.
I can't even start the meeting.
Okay.
The idea of reflection of what the board is looking for, what the board is looking for as well.
We've been drawing a map over here together.
Yeah, crossing out those. That's great, and Michael can, you know, build that within his substantial technology that we have available in-house, and use that as a foundation.
So just so I understand, you prepare a recommendation and you-
A draft.
A draft recommendation, and then what do you do with, you deal with Denise, and then we read into the record at the next meeting?
On notice meeting, and continue the work and discussion with some, we can make some all of that with Robin, and we can start with some changes that would affect the board's desires to the block that is on, as well as develop, and reflect. It's appropriate reflection with a parcel-specific appropriate reflection of whatever reason. Have you did that, if it's what the board wants?
So we can, someone, does everyone understand what David's saying?
Yes, we can.
Do you want to make a recommendation to let them make their first, and then after us, and then we have it at the next meeting?
Before I do that, I think that we should just canvas everyone on the board to make sure there wasn't anything else anyone wanted to discuss or bring up.
No.
Is everybody's good, are you good? You didn't feel any-
Do we know Burrell Terrace is a private way? Is that, that anything to do with drawing that line?
I don't know, that'd be something we should look into.
Because?
Because Burrell Terrace is a private way.
Is it private way?
But does that impact-
Does that affect the line?
Preserving, I don't know.
It's true, helps it during the action.
It's something that we should look into.
What's, what is the impact, what is the impact of the zoning change on a private way? So could we just find that out?
Sure, and we can certainly find, instead of looking at any of the questions that you raised, probably.
So add that to your recommendation.
Yep, we can certainly do that.
I mean, the motion's gonna be a pretty long one.
The motion would be just to accept David Rodriguez's draft recommendation.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I wouldn't just say to accept the draft because we say what it says.
I have 11 points that we made, do you want to go through them?
Six, six.
Well, why don't I start the motion first? Okay, so I, I'll make the motion to incorporate all of the comments that the board this evening agreed upon that are going to be listed by David Rodriguez and taken by Town Council and Mr. Rodriguez into a first draft to sort of document all of those opinions that we have expressed for us to review and confirm, accurately reflect our recommendation for the council. Do you want to list them?
So I had as a number one primary record, priority, priority, that there are no residences in the transitional areas, excluding specifically with a focus on Somerset and Cottage Park. Add the Hagman Road properties as identified on board, add the middle school site, excluding 9 till 11 and Waldemar, the one-to-one zoning, we were talking about the setback plus height provision, we'll work on drafting some appropriate language on that, add the Business A, add Lucky's in Metcalf, and, you know, incorporate to the best extent possible the design guidelines as expressed by Mr. Costas, as, as, as to the best as possible.
What was Lucky's in Metcalf?
Just going over, yeah.
And then Jefferson Street.
The Fremont issue.
The Fremont-Jefferson issue, I would say pending confirmation of, you know, our, the conclusion will be determined on the Burrell Terrace.
We can, we can build it, and then we can always carve it back.
We also excluded, I think we clearly said, but excluded the homes on Puckin Place.
Right, it goes down the center of Puckin Place and then takes a right right before-
64 Jefferson Street, which is the theater, and that is 50 next to it, we included those.
So were you saying that we're moving-
Hold on, we're kept defending.
So what about the skate, included or not?
Included.
Include that, I think we're having a little-
And he- You also mentioned Honors' recommendation.
We'll work on some, that's gonna be a little bit harder to craft, we'll do a best to do that. What about the undertown property, like Pauline Street?
You mean, you mean the schools and stuff? We did not include that.
Do you have any, say the properties on Waldemar?
I'm not sure what numbers, I'm not sure if that reflects the actual address.
We can give you, we will give you this.
On the map, Benny, though, the numbers we have, 9, 15, 19, 21-
Are excluded.
Okay, that's what I did.
Does anyone second that?
We need to define Bartlett, Bartlett Road, there was, when you cut across between Bartlett Woodside is 22, 73, 75, and then Clay and North is included, South is not, 30, 79, South are not, that's it.
Yeah, well, I wasn't sure, I was a little off here, but on North Side, I stopped at 76.
Yeah, yeah, 76.
And then 75, yeah.
All right, so we have a motion by Gina, a second by Honor, everyone in favor? Dave, are you in favor, Gina? Yes? Excuse me, because I am also. All right, very good.
Open it up for public comment again?
All right, sure, I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave it open to public comment. Please keep it to the scope of tonight's meeting, please try not to repeat. I guess the doubt.
I think it was Jen. Then many mentioned tonight about the townhome property on Pauline Street and the concerns for developing it. At the last Town Council meeting, Chairman Ron Beckinger spoke about the auditorium, gymnasium, and hockey rink being built on parked property. I was at the Forms and Place meeting at the Middle School, and there was a rendering drawn, and the rendering showed the hockey rink, a green space, and then a development at the top of Pauline Street on Waldemar. Forms and Place mentioned that the town had the right to build or change the use of the school site, which was 2.15 acres. I'm under, I'm under the understanding that the town only owns the right of 1.5 acres at the top of Waldemar, on top of Pauline Street in the corner of Waldemar. I've asked Forms and Place to get the opinions from Copeland Page concerning who owns what in that area. I asked them at that meeting, I've heard no mention of it right now, I see Mr. Forms and Place here shaking his head that I don't know what I'm talking about. I'd like it to give the opinions from Copeland Page concerning 141 and 151 to the general public. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further comments? Is there any, just a quick question. Well, thank you for the, this step you took to clarify the issue of the existing boundary lines, I appreciate it. You had two things that I wanted to picture. On Bartlett Road, what was the recommendation that you made for where it should end? Was it number, was that number 22, 24?
The numbers we have aren't really-
We purposely use anonymous numbers so that-
But the homes going up the either side, on the left-hand side of Bartlett Road going up the street are not going to be included on this recommendation.
There's three parcels between Adam Street, going down at the, like from Adam Street coming down, even though it's a one-way, that are not included.
Jefferson Street will not be included, okay. On the Jefferson Street property, you talked about the, you come up behind the theater going up the street. If I recall, I did, and it was back a long day, as I said to somebody, my recollection gets a little bit shaky as I get older, but I think that was a, that was a residence at one time that was converted and used as a veterans or as some kind of fraternal organization that utilized it, and then the medical practitioner went in there. So it's a, I think it's a residential property with a non-conforming use. Both the, both the fraternal organization or the veterans organization that was there and the doctor's office that were there are allowable in a residential district, but that's the, that's the reason for the building that's there and that in the state that it's in right now. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just one comment, a request, if you will. The, there have been a number of comments tonight reflecting the master plan that is now erected from the town. This is just a personal request from me, if you might, is not to take the master plan as inscribed by the finger of God on the side of Mount Sinai, so to speak. That, the entire master plan process was egregiously flawed in many, many ways. It's one of the reasons that there's these controversies tonight throughout the town. It was a very disappointing process, and I'm just asking you, frankly, not to shackle the future of our town, you know, to the recommendations of the, of the master plan. It was too deeply flawed of that. I appreciate the comments that you've made, and I really accept the fact that you are operating and making your comments for your concern about the future of the town, and I particularly appreciate that. But please, use your own judgment, which would probably be superior in many ways to the recommendations in the, in the master plan. Thank you very much.
I have two points in there, process points. My name's Johnny, present one. The first is probably the easiest one, and in looking at Burrell and Fremont Street, the idea of there's no real harm if we change this, we'll just increase the value and everybody's gonna make money, what they've become is non-conforming pre-existing uses, which limit their ability to sell their property as a residence, they won't be able to do that. And whether or not they'll make money doing this is speculative and in the future, and that certainly does not always happen. So there is an impact that needs to be, I think, considered more closely than it was. And Burrell Terrace, I'm familiar with it, has a large building, what its use was before it was used by a moving company, I don't know, but I know that Burrell Terrace is a residential private way, and it's not a bunch of businesses back there or anything else, it's frankly unpaid. My second point, and again, a process point, this meeting, and as it was posted, was to discuss the maps. It was to look at, and I think everybody here assumed it would have to do with the center as it's configured, the two different interpretations of the map. You have straight dangerously close and perhaps into substantive zoning changes tonight. The questions, the discussion around Fremont Street, the discussion of the middle school, the discussion of setbacks every 10 feet when they butt residential aid, these are all zoning changes, not map changes, and you're in very dangerous territory if you proceed on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment? Does anyone want to make a motion to adjourn? Are we adjourned or are we continuing to clarify?
Yeah.
I, I mean, if you want to, I think you should.
I think the outline, I mean, you're meeting legal panel.
I was, I was gonna say, it's only a recommendation.
It's not a recommendation yet, like, we haven't actually been written it.
That's correct.
It was a discussion by the planning board to hear each other's opinions, and I disagree that- And I also disagree that we took it very lightly. We still have a lot of work to do to look into it, to finalize the recommendation.
Chris, did you want to comment? I need to interrupt you, I'm sorry, I apologize.
No, I just wanted to clarify that changing the boundary line of the zone, I mean, it's my understanding, correct, that those are inherent, so we change to the zone town, maybe we'll work with you on that.
Well, if you change what zone property, then those are applies, and you get anything.
But we haven't done that today.
You haven't done anything other than, than an answer.
For a recommendation.
Or staff to come back to give you things to consider out of your public hearing.
All right, does anyone want to make a motion to adjourn? And what is, what is our next meeting, Denise?
July is?
Goal, however, is to try to get the map to a much lower second now. Goal, however, is to try to get the map to a right on a second.
We have to, we want a public hearing, right, with your recommendation.
If you were to port the date on.
So, do you want? We'll coordinate with the chairman and see how the facts are worked through this, and then we'll settle the appropriate.
Between now and July 8?
Is it, does it push back a week, is it all?
I don't know, but we're going to have to do another public hearing, so we're going to need the 14-day notice.
That is going to be hard for me to say.
Yeah.
You don't need 14 days. You're still developing the recommendation.
It's a recommendation.
As we're continuing it?
What, because you're developing, you haven't made the, or you're not giving the recommendation.
Yeah, I guess, this center, or the council board coordinator said that his goal was to at least get a recommendation that they can discuss as soon as possible.
Right.
So, I guess we'll see what draft we can get.
Want to try to meet in two weeks? Is this real open in two weeks?
Well, we can.
What's two weeks?
It's 24.
I don't know.
Is that too soon for you guys? I don't, I don't honestly.
That's a lot.
I was thinking just keep it at July 8.
Okay.
That, you know, that's only four weeks from now, and then that gives us a week for the public hearing I could put it in. And if we have to change that up to make it a 15, we can do that depending on.
Are we, are we continuing tonight, or are we adjourned tonight in the opening of the meeting on the 8th?
I think, we're not actually continuing this because we're going to change the public hearing.
We can close this.
We can close this. Right.
This is a work, this is a work. There's no exception.
Does anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
Please. I'll make a motion.
Any make a motion to adjourn to honor you second? Two days to adjourn. On the seconds.